Good morning, everybody. We will convene as Board of Supervisors. I need approval of the tentative agenda.
I so move.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All eyes. Claims been around?
Minutes.
Oh, god damn it. Why do I keep screwing that? Would you read the minutes, please?
August eleventh, twenty twenty five, term, what's in called the regular meeting of the Wright County Court. Most of my loose, second by clues to approve the tentative agenda, motion queries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of August fourth, twenty twenty five, and special meeting of August seventh, twenty twenty five were written and approved with one typographical error in the special meeting minutes corrected. Approved claims for payment. Motion by clues signed by Bosch to receive the monthly revenue report from the Wright County Sheriff for July. Motion here is motion by Ellis, sending my clues to appoint Samuel Kane as deputy or assistant. Motion carries. Motion by clues and segment by loops to appoint Chloe Cherry as civil process service. Motion carries. Jeremy Abbas, assistant to the Wright County Engineer, informed the board of the secondary roads desire to post internal job posting for the truck driver position out of the clearing maintenance facility that was recently vacated. Motion by clues and second by Ellis to approve the internal posting for the truck driver out of the clearing maintenance facility. Motion carries. Abbas then he even updated on the secondary road's department. Motion by Rassason and second by clues to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additions or corrections?
Deputy or assistant, that doesn't seem right.
I know what I said. Do we have the?
I was trying to just look it up.
Last week.
Yep.
I think it's just a.
Um, deputy sheriff. Samuel Kane as deputy sheriff.
So that needs to be corrected. Just let me know when you got that down and I'll come up and sign. Okay, the claims have been around, open forum for the public. Mark, do you have anything?
I just need to learn more about the hydrogen. Sonic boom is in sulfuric on our ground here. So I'm just here to learn more about that. If, if you want to, they are out at the museum. And I can hook you up some of that people. So, yeah.
They, they have given the um, new, current museum, five thousand, they've set up office there, kind of a camp office. And so um, they're there every morning, every day, I think.
Every day.
Every day.
I think Kyle is not there, but we can find somebody who is, I might be able to hook you up with Robert, the actual with manage who's doing the testing. Uh, but I think, yeah, I think Kyle is actually going to be coming back Wednesday. I'll double check with him and get with your schedule and see if I can set something up with you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And if, do you have any specific questions that we can answer today, or?
There was just a concern expressed to me that this wasn't just on public land, they were going through private property too.
Correct.
Okay.
Only with permission from the landowner.
Good for me.
Yeah, only with permission from the landlord.
Yeah, and Kyle said he still has to come back and do that.
Right.
That he still has to come back and speak with, because they had agreements prior when they wanted their first map and we kind of said, no, we can't do it. Um, and then they were still honoring those agreements, they were still paying those agreements, even though they may not use that private land. But there's some, so the idea of that private land that they're using is, is they may have a road, like two fortieths are going to be on uh, from Buchanan to Youngblood, but they may want to go stretch out farther than that because they want to stay in a straight line as much as possible. So they may go out past Youngblood and say, okay, who is going to connect this next mile, even though there's not a road, but who do we need to talk to? And get permission to go out. Thank you.
And just to clarify, we never told them that they couldn't test. Our limitations are, our permit was restricted. It allowed them not to come within two hundred fifty feet of.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for grabbing me on that. Yes.
Hundred fifty feet of what?
It was.
Our infrastructure under the roads.
Initially two fifty.
Yeah, we have since then changed that.
With, with extra cat yachts.
Correct.
Oh, we're still two fifty on bridges.
Two fifty on bridges, twenty-five feet and on all other structures, or they have what they call part or peak particle velocity. And if their peak particle velocity exceeds point five, they can't get any closer to a structure than point five. But that, that's now I'm talking them. So what do you do with them?
And then also no, no asphalt, no concrete road. So none of our paid roads. So.
Okay, moving on. Review and take action on twenty eighty agreement with the city of Dallas on law enforcement service.
You know, Jason was going to be here at all.
I'm pretty sure he would be there.
So the, the county has had a working relationship with the city of Dallas for quite a few years. And um, they, they cover certain um, like city ordinances. I think they don't do like the noise of the dogs or whatever.
They definitely don't do that.
So, and I didn't. I was hoping he would be here because I didn't read all the way through every single one of these, but um, this is a year to year. Um, at one time Franklin County was taking care of Dallas. Well, they had hired their own part-time Franklin deputy to take care of Dallas, but looks like now um, for the last several years, Wright County, I don't know. Amanda, did you look to see how many years?
I don't, I did not know.
Okay. Um, so and it looks like the city of Dallas has already signed this and it will be from July or should say August one through July thirtieth is when the uh, next year. So I just wanted this year through July thirtieth of twenty twenty six. And the amount, it will be twenty-six thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Um, payable quarterly.
I did not have a conversation with um Jason to find out if whether or not he had reviewed that. If it's all right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a phone call and check with him to make sure that he has reviewed this and.
It's okay to approve it. Not able to come to his phone right now. And we can hold off on it, go back to it if we have to, see if he gets in contact with us before we approve it.
I can read this paragraph that says service provided. If you want.
No, I, I know that that hasn't changed. I'm just wondering if if he's aware that the twenty-six thousand, or if he thinks that that needs to be renegotiated, or that was my concern.
I'm assuming Jason's the one that put this on the agenda.
I do not know. I was on, I was on vacation.
I've moved to table this.
Yeah.
Till next week.
Don't forget, put it on for next week if you would, Amanda. Thank you. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer.
So first item is, uh, I brought, I put back on the consider the truck driver position. Um, I think uh, there was some confusion on my part as what a ten day, ten day internal posting is uh, per the handbook. Um, I did research on there. I don't see a ten day mandatory internal posting in the handbook. I see a one point eight of the handbook says when there is a vacancy open um, that a ten day posting of the position in the courthouse here and all other applicable media um, is, is to be done, minimum ten days. And the idea of that current employees would also be candidates for that if they wish, but there was no internal posting idea. So my question was going to be, one, do you still want to keep an internal posting? Um, and if it's so, we, I should probably get with the handbook committee and we should probably put the verbiage in there so we can follow that, so that other department heads are going to follow it. Um, if not, I, I've been here since two thousand seven and we've never done a full ten days of internal posting. So.
No. So I guess um, with the discussion last week, what we had is that we'd like to see maybe um, a different, maybe a restructuring um, due to the, the current climate that we're in with the legislation. Um, I think we could hold off on the engineer posting it. And um, and right now indirect you to make the necessary, necessary restructuring within secondary roads um, to make the current, uh, to make sure the current policies, procedures and ordinances um, sort of priority, meaning, you know, the, the cleaning of the snow removals and that.
Granular program.
Yeah, granular programs and things like that.
Yep.
Um. If, if any claim in the future where the engineer or the board sees replacing this position will benefit secondary roads, we can revisit the decision at that time. So I'd like to see you just maybe restructure within your department. Um, and maybe move some people around to fill that visit, truck driver position and see where we end up.
Yeah. So, so what I would need from you today would be a kind of a rescind of the motion last week. And then essentially what I'm asking, what we, the question was, was whether to post it uh, to the public, was to follow the handbook, if there is a posting position. It sounds like, I mean, if that's kind of, I see a bunch of head nods. So I mean, yes, we are trying to be cognizant of budgets uh, and, and legislation that could come down that has put a quite a bit of burden on counties to figure out budgets. So, and we can do that very easily. I, I think um, I have no problem uh, reviewing it. I have no problem uh, taking phone calls if there's something that's changed. Um, I'm sure you guys don't either. Um, and we can have that conversation. If we make that restructure and something comes up, we'll have that conversation. We've, we'll have room to be able to add. It's just that we would need to understand that, hey, that, these things have come up. We're going to have to um, address uh, any issues that may come up and think those over uh, on how we would like to see the, the structure of secondary roads uh, put in place.
So with that, I'll make a motion to rescind last week's and the posting and just direct you to uh, restructure within and um, and move forward. So.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all eyes?
We'll make sure that I'm working closely with our HR attorney, Mike Galloway. Make sure I don't negatively impact any employee that we may move in this position. So just to make sure. Uh, next item is the update. Blades were uh, priority level two. So we started our priority levels um, priority one, two and three. So if you have questions about that, um, I'll have to bring Nate in, Nate and Dusty, and we can have maybe a work session of, hey, here's the maps that are priority one, two and three. Um, two is our biggest, biggest week. Most of the guys have their full, almost full blading miles to take care of. Uh, priority level one is, is not a huge week for them, but we're able to use them in other areas, um, like hauling rock or ditch cleans or focusing on other things. So um, we prepped uh, for the hand, they prepped the last week. So with the Hancock paving projects that's going to go on, started, it's going to start today. Um, we have the guys go mow, so we can put on our, we put out lath every three hundred feet to make sure we're keeping our proper yields on our asphalt. So we had them do that. So we could put the lath in. Um, the trucks are still hauling your, your one gravel, stockpiled shoulder rock and Belmont Yard, um, top dressing for mining key routes. Ten work orders were completed and then the hauling objectives, you can see down there, we keep plugging away at those as much as we can. Um, wanted to give you two updates, obviously with, um, actually a couple. Uh, Belmont Bridge, they tried to drive piling last week. I think on Friday Lynn said he stopped by to watch them. Um, they only made about four hours, I think, and then their, their hammer broke. So they're going to revisit on how to get that hammer fixed. The Voss Corey Bridge, uh, they're slated to move back in this week. Um, it's lower than we've seen it, but I don't know what's going to happen with the six inches that was uh, given to us up north um, of where we are here and the one, almost one inch this morning. Uh, so Voss Corey, there, the, that bridge should be coming in. Um, our paving project tried to start today. They're going to start their milling. Um, but they held off for today. So they're going to actually start on two fortieth, go north to highway three and then turn around and come back south. So I think they, they normally mill in the opposite direction of uh, traffic. So it just pulls up nicer when they do that. Um, they will be hauling out of the city pit off of two hundred, two tenth or two twenty, two ten, two hundred um, out here. So we've put dust control, we've put the dust control down in front of the, the landowner, the resident there that's on highway three. Um, they decided to take it even further all the way down to their pit location entrance. So it is dust controlled in that area. Um, I'm working currently with the DOT for a haul road agreement. Um, because the DOT's paving on highway three is going to come out of that same pit. So that's one half mile of gravel that's going to get.
Which pit is that?
So it's the city, um, let me call it the city dump, the city pit. It's out on, what is it, two hundred?
Up by Pike's River.
Yeah. It just, yeah, this is one right here. So it's just um, passed on the other side of that, right there. So only about a half mile, but we, I'm still making sure that we're going to, it's being taken care of properly. Um, and who's going to be doing the maintenance uh, during what project? So, because we'll need to probably re-rock it and then the DOT, I think, should help out with that a little bit. So since they have, uh, I think we have about twenty-five, thirty thousand tons of asphalt going out in the end, about the same. So, um, yeah, so that's where I have those seismic. Um, I gave the approval tentative, obviously on the hundred and ten thousand dollar permit fee um, for two hundred and fortieth street from Buchanan to Youngblood to start this week. Um, they have submitted a map. I'm still reviewing that. They have to submit another map with segments um, so that I know what schedule they're going to be on, so that they can describe those better and just sort of just giving me a line uh, that they understand where they're going and what they're doing. So we can have a conversation about a, a educated conversation about where they're going. You know, they can just say, hey, you go on segment two or segment four that next week. So they haven't set it up like that. They're getting back with their mapping person to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Is uh, over by Eagle Grove, that's one of the piece of road that's not a designated detour, but is used quite a bit, right? Two hundred and fortieth?
Two fortieth is not normally, it's normally two fiftieth, that's the, the cut through, because that's a higher grade.
Okay.
So, alright.
When they get up to a block top like Hancock or Madison, how far back do they have to sit? Because they can't go on the block.
Yeah, we're not allowing them to go on. But they can still come up pretty close inside the right of way. Um, but we're not allowing them to go on the paved surface. There, I had a long conversation with Kyle Handy last week on Friday. Um, they're really wanting to see County K. Uh, they're really wanting to test it and they went and looked at the shoulders and they don't think that they can get on it. I said, I'm still not comfortable with allowing you to go on a paved route, uh, especially with County K. It's, it's an older route. Um, we're trying to keep it as, and it's concrete, yep. And so I'm, I'm wanting them to find alternative routes. And I've given them a couple of alternative routes like Keyakuck or even Nelson Avenue that takes them about six, seven, eight miles from count, from clearing here all the way down to where Bean Farms. You know, and that's one mile off of, so.
Right.
But we'll see. So like I said, two fortieth this week from Buchanan to Youngblood, um, they estimate that amount of mileage should take about five days. Now, if it rains like it did this morning, they won't be out there because those sensors that they put in the ground every thirty feet are very sensitive to rain. So.
Because they hit them on the top.
They'll, it hits the ground, they can, it, it can feel all that vibration. So they don't do it. I don't even think they do it in snow either. Because it's that sensitive. Yeah.
Which didn't make sense when they were talking about truck traffic. I, I'm so totally confused by that.
Yeah, the noise.
Yeah.
So, but that's where they're at. If you have any other questions, let me know about that. I'm trying to get a better schedule from them. They keep kind of like, hey, we really don't know where we're going because this stuff's being reviewed and we may need to go change a mile or two. I said, well, you have, still have to submit a mile. You still have to submit that change to us.
Right.
So you should be able to say, hey, segment one is this, segment two is this, segment three, put it on a, a schedule. It's, I get schedules are, have the ability to be changed.
Yeah.
But at least we'd all be on the same page of where you're going.
And everybody's.
And that was insured by both of them when they were sitting here. So.
So I'm pushing, I'm pushing back very hard on, on what they understand as a segment, what they describe as a segment, and then where they're going. Just for the simple back one, uh, for, for us, telling our blade operators.
Yeah.
I mean, if you don't tell us and they blade up to every thirty feet, those things that you put in, that's on you, that's not on us. I mean, our guys will probably be smart enough to stop and say, hey, I've got this thing in my window and it's got a flag with it and there's a bunch of them. But hey, they're, they're going to do their job. They're going to get done what they need to get done.
On the uh, Woolstock, the C seventy bridge across the Moon River. Um, so are the days days have started again, right? I mean, when we went out and said, hey, it's low enough, you could be here working. They start counting again, I assume. Not like when you get here, we're going to start counting them again.
Correct.
Okay.
If they don't come in today, and we said, hey, it's low enough, we'll count those days. They still have a tremendous amount of days left, that, that project. They got some free work to work out of it because they came in early and the projects, uh, working days didn't really start till like April one or something like that. So.
So what, what is it they have to do? They have to do the?
The berm underneath uh, on the west side still. So they have a bunch of riprap that they used uh, to do their crossing, right? So their crane crossing. So they're going to pull that back and use that rip, reuse that riprap on the berm underneath and then they still have to do their paving uh, up to the.
Other approach, yeah.
Yeah. And then the guardrail is going to, so, but I don't, if they could come in and get some good weather, we can get this done.
On the side of the thing, are they, they're submitting a, a form to you, a schedule to you. Are you forwarding that to us?
I can, if you wish to. Yeah, yeah, I can. Definitely. Yeah.
I mean.
I, I can actually probably, what I was thinking about doing, because I asked them specifically, hey, let's make a team's file. Let's make a team's file. So I can go, I don't need to contact you every time I want to know an update. You just put it in there and say where you're at.
Right.
Move, move a line. So I can easily make a team's file for everybody here and include everybody in it so that, hey, you, you see their schedule. You see their stuff, what they've been submitting. So, and where they're going to go. We'll post it as much as we can on Facebook um, to get it out, out there. We do that and we have a road notification tool that we use also. Um, so that goes out to kind of all the hospitals and other uh, law enforcement agents and whatnot.
Bus tracks.
Bus, uh, it'll go to schools. It'll go to schools. Yes. Yeah.
And then they're submitting like their, I remember it from the meeting, they're submitting their data to you.
Yes.
Daily as well.
Their peak particle velocity and stuff. I need to get reports on how that's going to be viewed. Um, I submitted to them, I, I've uh, made a uh, CSV files or an Excel file of every culvert crossing, every tile crossing that we know about, every tile work order that we know about. Um, and submitted that to them so that they can use that inside of their um, planning tool so that they know, hey, I got to stay back. There's something here that we know about.
Right.
There's some stuff that we may not know about, obviously, some private crossings or something like that. But I've submitted the, every piece that I, of information I could to them, so that they include it. Any other question?
Anything else, Rod?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any old business?
Uh, we received a letter from uh, the city of Woolstock concerning the, the twenty twenty-five Woolstock urban renewal area, which is the new cooperative uh, location out just west of, excuse me, just east of the White Fox Road. Um, and that meeting is going to be held uh, uh, the meeting to discuss our urban renewal area has been set for August twenty-first at seven PM. Obviously, we'll be in uh, Des Moines at the ISAC thing. Uh, Daryl Stephen Carlisle will be there. Um, and then of course there'll be a, a true public hearing, which is set for September ninth of twenty twenty-five. Uh, so just for uh, why they're doing this, it's um, for the municipal water treatment facility, um, or what's called the water project for the city of Woolstock. Um, and the TIF uh, is anticipated that the city's use of incremental property tax refunds for the water project will not exceed one point five uh, million dollars plus interest incurred. So.
Do they have a development agreement rebate or anything also or not to do this stuff?
Not yet. Just, just this so far. And this is, they're working through Dorsey Whitney, who we're familiar with. That was it.
Any new business?
So all of us will be at ISAC.
ISAC this week, last week Thursday, Friday.
And Saturday is the Republican fundraiser, which I will be missing because I have a grandson's birthday party and.
Oh, can I point with you?
Just to add to that, Bobby Kaufman is the, the lead speaker. He was the former Ways and Means. He's the new majority leader and he's a very good speaker.
And that's going to be in Belmont at.
I'll be the lead.
Okay.
I'll be at a meeting. I have EMS tonight at five o'clock.
I'll be going down to ISAC tomorrow as uh, I've got an educational meeting. I serve on that committee. But other than that, just down there.
Was there anything new with economic development last week?
Oh. No, other than uh, you know, the concern of uh, some of the things that have been going around about possibly doing away with economic development and um, possibility of just, there's a lot of shit or chatter going on out there that uh, um, I know that each one of the board members was assigned a um, a supervisor to talk to to make sure that the, that this board is aware of um, the direction that, uh, that that board is wanting to go.
Mm-hmm.
Any else for the board?
Um, Botter has a question.
Oops. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, good morning. Uh, just got off a meeting with uh, another Zoom meeting with the Free Soils. And did you get a um, an invitation, Dean, for the meeting after the ISAC meeting on Friday from Steve Kinkle?
Yes.
Okay. Are, are you planning on attending that or?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your continued support. It sounds like uh, you'll have some information on whether it's, I'm pretty sure it sounds like it's going to the Supreme Court. So.
I, I will, I will relay any, any information that I learn.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Good journey.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes. Okay, well now convene as granted trustees. Oh, I had one more thing for supervising. We got to thank you for my admirable words of support to be this chair.
Okay.
Just to let you know, they do appreciate it. It does help out. Okay, approve the tentative agenda for granted trustees. Any approval for that?
So.
Second thing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes. Uh, would you read the minutes from the previous meeting, Courtney?
The last meeting was August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the Drainage District with the following members present. With the following members present, Rick Rasmussen, Dean Cluse, Lynn Luke, Ashabash and Betty Ellis. Also present, according to Morris Drain. Other interested parties were Route loss and Wright County Monitor via Zoom. Motion by Rasmussen and seconded by Cluse to call the meeting to order, motion carried. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Ellis to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Minutes of the previous meeting on August fourth, twenty twenty-five were read and approved. Drainage claims for payment were approved, there were no work orders, meeting approval. Morris presented the following drainage invoice for Nightmaster for Joint Drainage District one eleven dash three for communication about a petition. In the amount of four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Ellis to sign and approve invoice for payment, motion carried. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Ellis to adjourn the meeting, motion carries.
Any additions or fractions? If not, this end approved as read. Uh drainage claims.
We have one twenty, which is the one for Nightmaster in the amount of four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
All a favor?
Uh.
All eyes?
Were you have a question, and Dean brought it up this morning, last week we approved that Nightmaster the four hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Uh huh.
And, and approved the invoice for payment, and then today we are approving invoice for payment again. Is that something we need to do twice or can we just sign the claims and move on, do we need two motions on it?
Uh we don't need the motion um for. The. The invoices. It's like the, when I do the invoices here next.
Yeah.
We don't need a motion on that, as long as you guys approve.
The signing.
The signing.
Okay. And then next week when they're.
Yeah, I'll still present the invoices to you, you just don't have to make a motion on it, it's just to make you guys aware of.
What's, what's gonna be coming up to be percentage for signatures. Okay.
Because you guys sign each one of those invoices.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Open forum for public input regarding drainage districts. Review and act on a drainage work orders.
We have no work orders this week.
Review and sign any open drainage invoices.
Uh we have nine invoices this week. The first one is for uh twenty dollars and seventy-two cents, this is for the mailing for uh DD sixty-two's public hearing notice. The next one is the publication cost for Joint Drainage District forty-six dash ninety-two, this is Webster County share. Um for the portion that was posted in their newspaper and this amount came to a hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The next one is for Russian weed control for Joey Hara for DD five. Um he has provided all the required information for the contract that he has agreed to. Um this first one is for two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and it was estimated at two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, so he did come in under his estimate. The next one is for DD seven and his total is three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, his estimate was three thousand five hundred, so again, he came in under. The next one is for DD one seventy-seven, which is the North Main. Uh his total is two hundred and fifty dollars, which was exactly what his estimate was. The next one is for DD seven lateral one and this is for two hundred and fifty dollars, his estimate was three hundred dollars, so he came in under. This next one is for DD three for six thousand five hundred dollars, which is exactly what his estimate was as well. The next one is for a work order that was completed by Soil and Septic LLC, this is one that was in Subdrainage District one oh six. Uh that was reported by Chris Van Ness, this is one that um Lynn had spoke with him about, it came in at eight thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. And then the last one is for Wright County Secondary Roads in the amount of two hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy cents. And this was for uh flying the drone over DD five.
And so now you would like us. This is where it's confusing to me, we approved paying these this time and then next time it shows up. With the warrants. So which one?
You don't need to mention this one, this is just for information for you guys.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
And if it was in your district, the invoice should be in your, and you signed it to approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then next week, we approve the claims.
Got it, yeah, thank you.
And I have just one other question, you know, when you email these out to us, can we not do the duplex?
Oh, yes.
Because you get the page and then a blank, and then a page and then a blank.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too, I'm like, am I missing something? Yeah, yeah, it's because the Webster County one for the newspaper, it was a front and back, so, so, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Anything else before, anything else before the board and drainage?
Motion to adjourn. As drainage trustee, I'll second that.
All a favor?
Uh.
Aye.
All eyes?